The units that are in their rooms are meant to cool their room and they're leaving their hallway doors open. So it's trying to cool the hallway instead of just their classrooms. So they've been asked at least two years now to leave their classroom doors shut in order to keep this cool.
And I think those are great instructions, but I don't think the system's doing it.
So sir, if the HVAC system then finally gets commissioned and completed, then we can go ahead and balance out and see what we have. And maybe with the hallways and the main areas being properly heated and cooling ventilated, then maybe if the doors are open, it's not going to make that much of a difference.
Yeah, I think part of your problem's going to be fixed with what's existing, what's being repaired right now. But the heart of the problem that we get the complaints on is where the teaching's being done. And this has been an ongoing problem. And when you go out there, it's eighty-four degrees sometimes in classrooms. So if you could take a look at that any way we could, yeah, appreciate it.
I'll take another site visit over at Peterson, specific to the HVAC system, sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
You sound like you're getting a pretty good handle on things for being here such a short time. And I asked Dr. Stewart a while back for a list of our major projects.
Yes, yes. I went off the memory. I wasn't, yeah.
So the other thing that I would ask that we try to do, and I know you can't, nothing's ever certain, but if we could get like a timeline for completion of these things, like the high school project, I know it's like a two-year project I found out up there. If we could get ballpark, not real, you know, because sometimes we get those questions a lot out in public. And if we have ballpark ideas, well, it's a year-long project or it's a six-month, it's a month-long project. And I know how contractors are and they change them all the time and change time, you know. It's like building a house, right?
Right.
You know, but if we can get ballparks, that would help us. And I know you've got more to worry about between now and August fourteenth than that, so anytime, but...
Rest assured, I already have a draft for that. She's already requested that and that's already in the works.
Oh, you does her help me. Very good.
Yes, sir. What else?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I just found out about the lack of water down at Robert L. Bland this week.
At the Bland, the concession stand, yes.
Have you been notified or do you know when did this water problem actually occur? How long ago? When was the water turned off because there was a leak?
Rumor is that it's been going on for years. And so instead of having water just pumping into nothing and going straight into the local, I guess there's a ravine or river right there and they can't trace it, okay? So at times then they'll just shut it off so the meter doesn't spin. And the shut-off is primarily requested from the water company, utility company. So what we're doing now is we are marking for all utilities and we already have excavator on the hook, ready from Black Diamond with an operator. And so we're going to trench that, start from the concession stand. If you're looking from Bland to the field, concession stand on the left, we think the leak's on the left-hand side. So we're going to start there, find the line, trench it all the way back, fix the leak, and then we'll have water all the way over the way it should be.
Well, there's a good chance that line goes back to the N Y A during the Great Depression. That's when the complex was built. But when did you know there wasn't any water down there?
Just recently.
Well, I, Robert L. Bland, but it kind of irritates me where if you have a water leak down at that facility, that's been an ongoing problem off and on and they turned it off and they turned it off. It never, didn't make it up the chain.
It, I'm the top of the chain. I'm the top of the chain. I have it now.
Yeah, that irritates me that it doesn't make it up the chain when people stopped me on the street this week and says, "They're down there playing ball and there's no water."
Mr. Bush, I'll tell you when I found out and I brought it to Dr. Stewart's attention. It was probably about two weeks ago now and I was down walking the track. And I had, the soccer coach was having flex days and he said, "Hey, we don't have water in the field house and we don't have an ice machine that works," which are two pretty important things, at a football field house, soccer field house, et cetera. Well, the guy from the water company was there. So he looked at me and said, "Well, I came down and told him at the school they had a leak." I don't know exactly what answer he got, so, and he said, "But I'm going to go turn it off." And so he turned, I know who turned it off and he reported it to me about two weeks ago. And I don't know how long it had been going on. But you have to have toilets and water where kids are dressing and playing sports. That's where they go to halftime.
Well, I heard a comment that said someone made a comment, "Well, it's not costing us anything. Let it run."
Yeah, that's a waste of resources.
Well, I'm glad you're on it. Glad you're on.
The fact is that I am the top of the chain. She hired me for a reason and I'm here to do my job.
Yeah, I'm glad you're on.
Yes, sir. All right. Sir, anything?
Yeah, I'd like to follow up from our visit we had up there. I forget what day it was, last Tuesday.
Yes, sir.
Do we owe any further communication with Stonewall? I know that there's a lot of writing. Is the communication fluid, I guess, is all I'm asking.
Okay, so regarding the stabilization of the athletic fields for both schools, the high school and Bland, okay? Happy to report, I've made the request from both the high school and the middle school. And high school and middle school both responded within the timeframe. And so we have all the preliminary information. And then that was the second meeting that we had with the Stonewall Jackson Resort and those experts over there, they've put me in contact with the subcontractor and I'm making those arrangements this week, so we will get a subcontractor involved. I will say that my initial thought was to stabilize the fields and then try to train from within. However, that's not such a good idea because now I'm being further educated as we go. And so there's a significant investment in the proper equipment, significant investment in training, and we don't have the licensing to spray any herbicide or pesticides. So I think we may need a long-term subcontractor regime. But once it's stabilized, then we can just go with the maintenance and then I'll keep an eye on it. But as far as training in-house, I don't know if that's going to work and I don't think that that's the best move.
That kind of dovetails into the next discussion, really.
Right. Sir, did you have anything else?
No.
No? Okay. Dr. Stewart, do you have anything?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Outstanding.
Thank you.
So I'd ask for this next topic to be placed on there simply because the gentleman there, he saw what kind of condition we were in. We've all been to the, to our complexes and they've been a little bit, they've been in better shape, we'll just put it that way. And I acknowledge that equipment's perhaps a part of it, manpower, staffing, all of those dynamics. So I had thought to maybe alleviate some of that distress, to get an idea of maybe having a third-party contractor, whatever, to help with those grass cutting projects, particularly around our athletic complexes. But I also think Dr. Stewart might be able to fill us in a little better with an idea or two, maybe.
So based on the information that Mr. Gissy had shared, I have done some investigating. And so if we move to a third-party for mowing and athletic complex maintenance, we would essentially be paying twice for the same job because our custodians currently have that as part of their job duties. So if we, we are not permitted to lessen a contract for an employee to then turn around and use that money to contract it out. So the suggestion that was given to me was that we look at creating, whatever you want to call it, a mowing crew, an athletic complex crew, and then we would use our own employees. We would train them on what we need them to do and then they would perform the work.
Now, maybe I misunderstood.
Per school, per year, or what?
We don't, I don't have any details. I was, Mr. Gissy just asked to explore it, so we're just having a conversation at this point. There's a decision that would have to be made.
See, years ago, like I said, they always, they had, they would bid that out, that they would be a mowing crew and they would take care of things like that. And then they would go to other schools, like say, Jane Lee School down there. There's a good bit of Weedy. And they had a floor crew that done the floors and that allowed the janitors to go in and do other, other things that they don't normally get to do because of they was doing the floors and that kind of thing. They had a floor bucket crew. There's three or four of them and there was like three or four on the Weedy crew. And it was bid out and it was, you know, bid out and it was comprised of our employees.
Maybe I misunderstood, but...
It worked out real good. I mean, the place had looked really good.
Maybe I misunderstood, yeah, please, if Mindy, is that okay with you? Maybe I misunderstood, but you talked about having to subcontract something out because of the needed expertise and maybe...
And my conversation was specific to the ball fields. But as far as the, and I'm not here to step on anybody's toes, okay? It's just my opinion and I haven't had any discussion with Dr. Stewart about this.
I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
That, I'm sorry. So what I, my intent as the facilities director is to in-house keep the custodial staff busy, but train them on the equipment that they have and within their capabilities for mowing the schools in general and also teaching them not to cut the grass too short, not to run into the bleachers, that type of stuff. But use the equipment that they have and that would take care of the fields in general, but the specific ball fields then subcontract for that specialty. And we have the equipment. We can train the guys if they need, you know, further training for that. Now, the brush hogging, maybe that's another element. The brush hogging, I've made contact and we have this week the brush hogging performed by the gratitude from, and volunteering from the local gas companies. So I met with that guy last week. So he's coming out. He has two crews doing the brush hogging. But as far as the mowing and whatnot, I think we can do that in-house. We have the machines. We just need to keep them maintained. We need to train the guys on how to use them correctly and I think we're okay.
The football fields and the softball fields are another thing. Mindy, is there something we can do separate from that since it does take a little bit of expertise? It's not just going out there mowing. I mean, when I was walking that track, I looked at that field and it looked like my yard. You know, and how I keep my yard. You know what I mean?
So I think with the custodian's current job descriptions, contracts, that is part of that.
The fields.
So we cannot take that away from them and then turn around and use that money somewhere else. So we, if there are specialties like putting pesticides and herbicides and those kinds of things that they cannot do, then yes, we can contract that out. But if there are duties that our custodians have done in the past or are currently being asked to do, then we can't, we can't take that money and hire somebody else to do it.
Well, once we salvage them, I mean, the custodians can probably mow them, I would think, but I mean, I think they're going to take some...
But within that salvage area, it's going to take an investment from us with material and equipment and resources. Don't think you're just going to do it on your normal salvage, on your normal custodial thing to turn this thing around overnight. Because they're in bad shape. They are in bad shape for accounting with a standing levy like we have to let this stuff go this long.
That's my opinion.
You can say all you want. We can train in-house and all this, but the field's in bad shape and this is immediate, needs immediate attention with resources, with money and with equipment.
That's exactly my opinion. Now, if we take, and I don't know about the politics or what we can and cannot do with finances, but I do know that our existing custodial staff could take much more attention into the foul areas of the ball fields where we don't need to subcontract that out.
Like the weeds growing up in the bleachers.
That's exactly right, sir. So that would be something that our custodial staff could do easily.
And Mr. White, what I'm saying is not to have them do that during their regular duty. So we would all, we would create a crew that would do that outside of their contract, so it would be additional for them to do.
And that's a resource we're committed to.
Yes.
And they could be substitute custodians. They have to be. Doesn't that have to be full-time personnel? It could be, it could be coaches. It could be, what could it be comprised of?
It would, it would have to be posted as extracurricular and because our custodian's already doing it, it would have to be a service position.
It would have to be his earth position, okay.
So that's, we're going to post that and that's going to take a while.
Potentially.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying. We're against the clock. We're two weeks away from schools starting and football games and a lot of activities on these fields.
Soccer's August twentieth, first one up at Lewis County High School. So you really probably don't have enough staff to do what we need to do in terms of mowing and stuff? Or do you have enough staff? Or do you even know yet?
Outside of...
Custodial staff.
Outside of the ball fields.
Well, I'm talking about, I'm talking about keeping the schools clean and doing what they need to do and outmowing. Do we have a...
I can't, I can't make that assessment right now. However, I do know that we have gathered in two weeks, we have gathered all the machines and most of them have been turned back to the school that were non-functioning and we've actually salvaged. So we do have enough equipment to get these lawns mowed.
Because football fields and stuff, if I'm not, and baseball fields should be, Johnny, you know better than me because you built them. They need to be aerated and stuff a couple of years.
Sure. Yeah, there's a, and Tyler's aware of that. There's a whole plan. I'm sure we'll get to that. But what worries me is we're behind the eight ball already.
We're behind the eight ball for August twentieth for a soccer game.
Our fields have gone so downhill for so long, there's been no attention to them.
Yeah.
Very little attention. Those fields haven't been aerated. They haven't been fertilized. Like you said, cut, just peel down and there's no topsoil. The topsoil burns up.
Right, sir. And we don't have the equipment for that. We don't have air.
No, and the equipment's nothing. It takes special equipment to take care of that. And it takes labor. It's not, it's not easy work. Yeah.
With that said, we're the only school in the Big Ten that does not have turf, the only one. And the only game that we're going to play this year that is on grass besides at Lewis County High School is at Berkeley Springs. The only one in the Big Ten. And, you know, I hear grass is safer, grass is safer. If we're going to, if we're going to have grass in both places, let's make it the, let's make it the best grass field we possibly can then. If we're not going to, if we're not going to go and try to turf it, like everybody else.
So what would, what would we be out for exploring, say, a two or three-person crew that painted the lines that, that with the contractual help to put the chemicals on the field? What would we be out just to put it out there for posting? Maybe there would be a two or three bodies that could help put a kind of a Band-Aid on the situation for a while.
Yeah, I mean, it's a matter of posting the jobs and hiring.
We would have to be careful with the chemicals. Those have to be specialized training people.
That's what we're saying.
I'm not sure that our custodial staff, they have never been trained in that, so that would have to be an application process done somewhere.
Sure.
I just don't remember being so bad in the past up there. Maybe it was who took care of it. Is that what it was? Somebody?
Some of it, yes.
And he retired.
We had a large turnover, especially at Lewis County High School.
And he retired.
The only person caring for that facility in the last fifteen years, there's been a large turnover. It's been revolting.
Because it all, yeah, okay.
And that is something we could absolutely do.
It does.
Let me come up first, speak and then that microphone.
I'm sorry. What was the question?
Mrs. Mace was just saying that the chemical piece of things, we would have to have somebody do that because our folks are not trained to do that. And then she said that the, they've had a large turnover with staff at Lewis County High School, so that's part of the disrepair of the fields.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that and I think keeping that dialogue with Stonewall and WVU, I think that that's a phenomenal partnership. They seem very interested and I think it was sincere. My opinion is we explore having a third-party. I think Johnny, you even mentioned somebody that has their license that would likely bid on such a project like that.
May volunteer to do it for free.
Don't know, but I certainly think that it's not going to be, I don't think that we'll be out a doggone thing to get something posted to where we put together a simple crew to help out with some of the, I guess, run over. But that's, I mean, that would be up to you guys to fill if you think that that's something that's worthwhile exploring, if you'd agree.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler.
It's just got to look better than, it's got to be better than it is now, guy.
Far better.
I mean, really all our facilities do and I appreciate the report and, you know, I have a little bit of optimism, so.
That's all I have. Thank you. Superintendent updates.
Just a couple of things. The National S R E B Conference was really good. We came back with a lot of ideas and we will be sharing those and presenting some of that information to you at an upcoming board meeting. At Lewis County High School with WVU and Hope Gas, there was a basketball camp. I've heard that that went really well and was a huge success. We had lots of kiddos participate. I know there's a volleyball camp coming up this week at the high school. If you've not marked your calendar, convocation is August the eleventh and so you are invited to attend that with us. We will begin around eight o'clock in the auditorium at the high school. Also, band camp is occurring this week, so you're also invited to attend their family night at Selbyville on Friday. That'll be the band's first performance. And then I wanted to, I had mentioned this to Mr. White, I just wanted to make sure that, I said this out loud in public, that the federal funds that had been withheld are being released and so we are waiting on our allocations for that funding. Mrs. Mace and I had spoken today and we are requesting a special board meeting between now and August eleventh. August eleventh is our next meeting, so we would like to consider a special board meeting to do nothing but personnel so that we can get some folks hired rather than waiting until the first day and then missing that first day of school.
August seventh. If we do it on the sixth, they'll put it on Thursday. We'll come down until the sixth. We won't have children on their back until the seventh. Just keep that date.
Anything else?
That's all. That's all. Thank you.
I'm good with August seventh.
Board comments. Mike?
I have nothing but this time.
Mr. White?
Yeah, my comment was onboarding. We had our first onboarding class for our new employees. I've heard nothing but good things before. It was hand them a key and give them your room, but we had a whole day with them. We paid them and we treated them well. And if we keep, with the new school year going, you know, if we communicate with each other and get out to these schools and help these people, we'll be off to a better start. But communication has to be better and that onboarding was part of it. That shows we can do it. That was great. Eleven new employees. I talked to a bunch of them. They were tickled. They enjoyed it. We fed them. We showed them. They met different departments. They just didn't know where to go. You told them where to go. You met the people. You met face to face. And I think that's a big deal. It's a first impression with people. And with dental now and with vision, nobody can say we're not, the opportunities aren't out there. We're there with them now. Personnel's competitive. We've got to be competitive. But the onboarding was nothing but success and I think that's great.
It was a great day.
Yep. That's all I have.
Mr. Fable?
Well, I wasn't going to say anything until Dr. Stewart reminded me of the basketball camp on Friday. I tell you what, I liked it so much. I took Matthew up, number one. I spent the whole day. I just, you know, and it was absolutely fantastic. So kudos to Morgan O'Brien for, and Hope Gas for helping to make that happen. My friend Rob Alsop, who coordinated things up there on that end. And I tell you what, those ten, eleven, twelve WVU players, the future's, the future's bright. Because I tell you what, they were respectful. They treated those kids like, you wouldn't have believed it. And a lot of those kids may not get to do that again. I mean, I had my thirteen-year-old playing one-on-one with Honor Huff, who's one of the best three-point shooters in the country. And it was, it was just a fantastic day all around. And the one thing that we want to keep in mind, you know, Hope's sort of a lot of good stuff. What he mentioned to me up there that day was, he's going to come for, he's going to come for an ask and it's going to be, you know, that Hope Academy to, for us to fill students in those jobs to create natural gas jobs. So we're lucky to have them as a partner and I got to tell you, it was, it was a fantastic day even for me. That's all I have. Mr. Gissy?
Sir. Mr. Bush?
Yeah, I'm going to share some sad news. Since the last board meeting, three former employees have passed away. And I'd like to send condolences to the families of John Lamb, who was a bus driver, and Larry Byrne, who was a bus driver, and Brenda Rogers, who was a fixture at the county office for years. I think everybody knew Brenda. So our thoughts and prayers to those families.
Sir. Kind of a random exploration. Kind of a random exploration. I spent some time with Department of Land Securities Critical Infrastructure Team and they offer active shooter training. Matter of fact, I'm bringing in to do some, do some training for, for us at my place of work. And I didn't know if that would be something, that there would be some appetite for faculty, Senator, would want them to, to come in and do that. It's free. They'd be happy to, to do that. And this is going to sound very random. I'm curious to know, or if there would be any type of, of grant money to where we would have, and maybe we do, Mr. Bush, have a fire extinguisher in each classroom. I don't know. Anything, I, I don't know if that's been done, but I, I really would like to maybe see if that's explored. We do miss?
No, we don't have.
Okay.
But those are great ideas.
I think, yeah, a couple of different directions. It would, it'd be good. So if there's any, any way of maybe looking into that, I'd appreciate it. I don't have anything further. Next meeting will be on Monday, August eleventh at six P M. at the administration building. Do I have a motion for adjournment? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. Motion carries.